Hello to everybody.
Nico.
Yes. It's Grant.
Sorry, just give it a minute, the Principal Inspector.
Okay.
Just a second.
Let's hold on, Grant. No, no, don't stress. Put your hands up, Grant.
Sorry, put it down.
Right, fourteen people so far. Right, sixteen people. Hello Vernon.
Hi, how are you Nico?
Fine, thanks, bro.
Very good, thank you.
Can you all hear me? Because Anika said I was soft.
I can hear you fine.
Fine, you're right, thanks. I don't want you guys to be irritated because you can't hear me. Grant, are you winning on that side?
Okay, Nico, we don't use the videos because of Charles' data. So if anybody could mind, switch your video cameras off. Then, and then it's a lot less data that we use.
Yeah, I'll put mine off now, and then just talk. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna start, if you don't mind, Grant. I'll just give an introduction and maybe give some bit of background, and then I'll hand over to you and to Jeremy, my Regional Chairperson in KZN. Just for the, for those who might be new or don't know exactly what's happened. We tried at the end of last year to have a meeting with Grant and the Principal Inspector and some of the other staff members. But it just fell apart. We just didn't have time and things didn't work out and we had some, had some fun. So what we decided is to have a meeting now. There are people that say on a Monday morning is not a good day. But let's start it. Somebody's mic is on, Grant, I think, might be yours. Just click your, there you are. So what we decided to do is even if we just have a start meeting, Grant and myself spoke about half an hour ago, and we're suggesting that we have this type of meeting every, let's say, second month or even so. And not have a half a day meeting because we don't have, all have time for this. And we start listing stuff that we need to share, and I think that's what it is. I also undertook with Grant now, that this is not a fighting session, and we're not gonna shout and scream and swear at each other. Because then I'll just, we'll just close the link. So it's a discussion. The agenda wasn't very clear, and it's not, we haven't got lists. We did ask, but we didn't get much. So there are a few things that we would like to raise, and we're gonna leave it up to members to raise it. And we're also gonna leave it up to the DMRE to raise it. What I would like to do at this stage is to say, or ask Grant to maybe just tell us on his side who's all linked in.
Nico, we all, yeah, just one thing, we don't have the attendance register on the joint conversation or show conversation. Do we want to include a register?
It's difficult, we've never done it, but if you go to the top, you'll see there's two little heads and little bodies. If you click on there, it tells you who's in, and that we will record who's in. Do you see the little, two little right at the top? Those two little drawings of people, two little heads, you click there, that's where I'm in. So we're nineteen people. It gives you the list of all the people that are in. Anika, that's right, eh?
Yes, Nico, you're right. You click on the two little men icons, and then it will show you the participants of the meeting.
And then we have that, and then afterwards, Anika, let's may have it, and that's the way to go. Right. Grant, maybe just give us a rundown who's on your side, and then I'm gonna open it up. I've got a few questions to ask, but I'd rather ask that, that some of the people that are in the meeting raise some of the issues that we would like to raise.
All right, thanks Nico. Before I hand over to the Principal Inspector, if everybody can just switch their videos off and their microphones off, then it doesn't call an echo while we're talking. Then, secondly, I don't know how to do it. I haven't got a password for team. But the one, the little icon next to the two little men, if you push there, it says show conversation. If the organizer of the meeting puts the link up there, then you actually click on it and you fill in your particulars, and it registers as a member of the meeting. So I don't know, we can, we can see if we can do that during the course. But if I can hand over to the Principal Inspector just for opening remarks, I thank you very much, Nico.
Thank you, Grants. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for making yourselves available. I'm happy that you are able to have this session. After our busy schedules, we are ultimately able to make it. In our team, myself, who have, people who have met me, those who haven't met me, my name is Matzili Sosibitwani. I'm the Principal Inspector of Mines for KZN. I am here with the team, Mr. Grant Amos in Inspector Mining, Mr. Leboham Piri, Inspector Mining, Mr. Temba Sitole, Inspector Mining. And we're really looking forward to a progressive session. We are, I think that we, we are at a point where we haven't finalized the agenda yet. But let's make it a general meeting. Let us just discuss all these items that we can assist you with, obviously in terms of the Mine Health and Safety Act. Where we can't assist you, we will redirect you. But I hope that we'll be able to assist each other going forward and be able to resolve some of the issues that you're unclear of. And also we're looking forward to your positive contribution. Thanks very much. I think I'll hand over to Nico, and just a brief in terms of how do we go forward, with all ears.
Right, I think two, two things that's important. Thanks very much. Let me just put this, this phone of mine off now. It would ring now. Sorry, guys. I know it's rude. But I forgot to put it off. Welcome to everybody, and we've actually got a very good attendance register, twenty-one people, which is great. Thanks for the DMRE to allow us to have this discussion. Just a bit of background, we had a meeting with DMRE Head Office about, you know, 2020 makes us all forget where we were. But it was in 2019, and some of the people that are in on today were there. We spoke to the Ministers to Advisors, and they said we should frequently have, we should frequently have meetings with regionals. So in 2020, it didn't happen, and I suggested to Grant, and I just want to clear it with a PI, that maybe every second month we have this type of meeting, sure, people give us issues for, for agenda. So today, it's a bit of an open field, but we'll, and if it's not relevant and it's not answerable, then we'll put it on the notes and we'll, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll decide when it is. It's always important to note that these meetings are not anti collusion. We can't collude, yeah, we can't say you do this and we do that. That's the first thing, and then the rules of, of teams, where we all put us, Grant asked us to put our mics off. So what I want to do, if I may, from the DMRE, can I ask for a hand to kick off and say, he has a few problems, or he has a few things we don't know, or he has a few things we would like some advice on? Because I think what the Ministers to Advisors said, that we should also talk to the DMRE in the regions and ask for advice. So I think that's, that's my sort of focus at today's meeting. Grant, you could go, my friend.
All right, thanks. That's actually my hand there. I'm sharing a computer with Grant. Thanks for that brief, Nico, I appreciate it. I think before we proceed into the crux of the matters and the questions that we have collectively, and before we attempt to assist, maybe if we can, as Aspasa, give us a brief indication of our safety performance across the region? How, how are we doing in terms of safety, health, especially COVID, just for basis for this meeting that will assist a lot?
Sorry, are you asking us to give you something?
Yes, I'm asking Aspasa to just give us a brief of how are we doing in terms of performance with the operations that are under Aspasa, together with the COVID performance in general? So it doesn't have to be specific statistics, but just as an overview.
Okay. I think we've got people, yeah, that can do that. I think Jeremy is my Chairperson in KZN, and maybe I'm gonna, I always put him on the spot. Shame, but maybe he can give us an introduction. These people that are very relevant. Thanks, Jeremy.
Great, thanks Nico, and welcome to running. Thanks, thanks for this meeting. Just from my side, I think, as far as I'm aware, Nico, we haven't pulled anything out independently from, from the national stats that go through to the DMR, which is, we're something that we've already discussed about as Aspasa, to have our own set of stats to, to be able to focus on, on our direct industry as such. So just from my side, I think most guys have been inspected numerous times from the DMR, and everything is going well. And guys that are falling short are taking up and covering the points and making sure they comply with, with the overall vision of the mining department. So just from my side, I don't think we have any independent or direct figures directly, just from Aspasa members, we'd be running off the national figures that are with the Mines Health and Safety Council. Thanks, Nico.
Thanks, Jeremy. I just want to maybe help our colleagues. Is that when COVID came, we were basically at some stage flooding people with COVID guidelines, COVID documents. We got them from all over, from the Minerals Council, from the DMRE, and we also got documents from our connection with GAIN. We are part of the international body, and other countries were developing stuff that were unbelievably good, and we put that into Aspasa documents. So we're here and we believe that Aspasa members on the COVID side were complying and doing what they should have been done. But Neil, you on, and Glenn is on, and Brian is on, give us your few guys.
Morning, everybody. Neil, yeah, we received the stats from Grant. Thanks very much. For the first two months, and in Kuzalu Metel, we've got, so far, we've got one fatality and three injuries. Fortunately, nothing on our side. We're all just trying to stay ahead with the COVID. So, so yeah, everything fine on, on this side of the indubitably. Thank you.
Vernon?
Okay, so this is, good morning, everyone. So from every same point of view, in terms of, first, in terms of injuries and stuff, none on our side. That's over the last, if you look at a twelve-month period with no serious incidents. There was a lot of focus on COVID. We had a few employees that contracted COVID, but outside of work. So, so nothing that was work-related. And then for most of them, it was either family members that had contracted COVID, and they were in contact with them. But all our operations have the necessary COPs, rules and procedures in place that is followed. And I also know that all our operations have been audited by DMRE. With the few minor suggestions, it was suggested to do some changes. So in terms of that, we're doing well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Right. I think what, what we also just need to share with our colleagues at the DMRE, Aspasa members have for over five years had no fatalities in Aspasa member companies. Over five years now. So we, the last one was a TMM, what we call a traffic management accident in Pretoria. That was over Easter weekend, it will be six, six years. So we're trying to keep the fatalities down. We do our utmost. Marius Audit started auditing again. We built into the audit document, which is quite important to understand, that COVID rules, and he's having fun. People are cutting straws in half to save money and make you blow at whatever you have to blow and whatever. So he's having great fun. He reports back to me, and he's looking at that. We've also built into our audit document the compliance issues on traffic management and so forth. So we're trying to, as the things come through the Mine Health and Safety Council, through EMRAC, which is a bit of a problem, but EMRAC, not much is happening at this stage. And we are dealing with the Chief Inspector on that as the industry, as the mining industry. But we, we don't have any cases that you are aware of that are, that are, that are serious. So if, if Grant, if you guys at the PI wants to share with us, please share with us.
Thanks very much for that brief. We appreciate it. I think as a region, where we are standing currently, there is a month, there is a weekly form that is, we've requested mines to submit every single Monday at ten o'clock, just so that we get the status of the COVID response in the, in the, in the operations. Even though you are not having a case, we encourage employers to fill that in so that we don't assume that there isn't cases. So there's a form that we fill in, we are requested to fill in every single Monday. The stats currently in KZN, and this is updated until the seventeenth of February, 2021. A new stat will be published today after ten, once we've received information from the mines. So in terms of the total screens, screens conducted in the province is six thousand seven hundred and two. A total test conducted, seven hundred and four. Total confirmed cases, five hundred and eighty-eight. Total positive cases for the previous week, that will be the week before the seventeenth of February. It would be zero for that week, because then we measure week to week. Total active cases at the time, twenty-seven. Total recoveries reported, five hundred and forty-eight. Total deaths, thirteen, and our recovery rate is ninety-three point two. So that's where we stand in terms of the numbers in the region as of the seventeenth of February. And there's a lot of work that the operations are doing, employers, as well as employees collaborative with, with unions that they're doing. The numbers have significantly improved. I think there was, the week before, we were at around eighty-two percent. So we definitely improve with this. So I'd like to encourage employers to keep enforcing measures that we have. Late in the year, on the twenty-second of December, there was a communication with regards to tightening measures in terms of combating COVID regarding startup procedures and, and all the other measures that are expected at mines. So that's where we stand, colleagues, in terms of COVID stats. And I really want to thank the employers for their continued efforts in reducing the exposure thereof. Okay, I think Nico, we can just allow for, for the context of the meeting to start going forward, and we can just assist where we can. Thank you.
Thanks for that input. May I ask a question? That's how crucial that we have this meeting. That form that you need, if you could maybe forward it to me, and we could just maybe send it to all our members. I'm not sure if everybody's submitting their figures firstly. And secondly, your weekly document, would I be able to get that too? Because I get that from Northern Cape and other provinces. I've never, I never knew there was, there was one in KZN. If you, if you're allowed to share it with me, I will also share it and, and help you guys get the right stats, if that's possible.
Absolutely, absolutely, Nico. No, definitely we'll share it. And I think the form as well, I'll just request Ms. Lamini to send it through to yourselves, and then we can just distribute it with your colleagues. And then we'll give you the updated status that we have, that I've just shared with you now.
Thanks. Oh, thanks. Is there a hand? I'm not seeing, I heard a hand, but I don't see the hand. Guys, if there's anybody who wants to make a comment, please feel free to do so. It's very difficult to always see who has a question. Right, otherwise, I'm gonna start with, with something so we can discuss, and, and maybe you guys will then start participating. We've had some, we've had some, I don't know, not an incident, but some query about the whole issue of a mine manager certificate. Now, you know, I sit on the Mine Health and Safety Council and on EMRAC, and I know at some stage this mine manager certificate was, was.
Nico, are you losing your audio? I think you're on mute, Nico.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm talking to myself. Sorry, I'll start again. Thank you, Anika. Just something that I want to raise at this stage, it's the, the mine manager certificate, which has become a problem at one or two of our members, smaller members in KZN, where people are saying, where's your mine manager certificate? That whole process was started at EMRAC, and the discussions did start. But we haven't had much coming out of EMRAC for the last year roughly, and it's a bit of a problem. Maybe just from, from the DMRE, just give us a bit of background or anything that, that we can share with our people about a mine manager certificate? Because a big mine manager and a quarry manager is two different things. And just help us there if you can. Otherwise, we're gonna, we'll work together offline and try and find out what's going on. I'm not sure if you all heard me.
Just, hi Nico, can you hear me?
Yes, great, thanks.
All right, Nico, the mine manager.
You did. Grant, you got did. Grant, not, not on. Sorry, we lost you.
Yeah, thanks.
Basically? Is there a problem?
Yeah, I'm back. There we go, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, let me say that again. I'm on a landline, and the landline's not so. It's got a clip missing. Okay, so on an underground mine, at the moment it's an underground mine, you need a manager with a manager's ticket for the class of mine. Years ago, the Old Minerals Act used to say mine manager on an open cast needs at least a permanent blasting certificate for the class of mine. But that fell away when the Mine Health and Safety Act came in. So there's no requirement for a manager on the mine. I think the big issue here is, how do you ensure that that person is competent to run the mine and understand the Mine Health and Safety Act, the requirements of the act, if he doesn't have a blasting certificate or anything in that line? Yes, there has been talk from, from the department on wanting to get some kind of a quarry manager's ticket going. At one talks, it was similar to that of a mine captain on underground mines. Further talks with University of Johannesburg actually brought in qualifications more along the line of a degree as being the minimum requirement to have a manager or to be a manager on a mine. And that refers to not only open cast, but underground as well. So no, there hasn't been movement, and the requirements as such are not like that. But how does the employee ensure that that manager has the sufficient skills and training to know which legislation is applicable to the mine? I hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Grant. Is there anybody else who wants to jump in in the meantime? And that's what I understood to what Grant said exactly. I understood, and I gave that advice to our member and said there's nothing yet. We did look at the issue of quarrying in the UK's document. They've got a document that's, that's like that. But we also didn't take it further on this quarry manager qualification. So Aspasa will, with our training provider and our connection overseas, we'll most probably push this one if needed. Jeremy?
Great, thanks, Nico. Yeah, I think it's from issue of quarrying, we've been looking at for, for many years as well, trying to create an international standard recognized within South Africa as it is around the world. But I think the focus is that there's numerous individuals, even from the DMR side, looking at what can we put together to deem someone competent. So yeah, as, as an employer, you wanna make sure you tick all the boxes and make sure everyone on your, your site is safe. So for me, it's just good to hear that everyone's trying to put something together. And hopefully, within a short space of time, we can come up with a qualification that managers can, can work towards. Thank you.
Thanks, yes, exactly what I feel too. Thanks, Jeremy. I don't know if anybody else wants to say something on this. I can move on to the next point. And I'm gonna raise it because I don't want to waste your people's time. It's Monday morning. The next point that I want to raise, which is a major problem, and again, it's stuck at mine, EMRAC, Mine Health and Safety Council, but in EMRAC, is this whole thing about the engineers with this two thousand five hundred kilowatt. I always get it wrong, but because I'm not an engineer. But two thousand five hundred kilowatt, whatever we, we, we call it. There's, there's some regions in South Africa, for example, Western Cape, who says it doesn't apply to a quarry. And there's other regions that say, oh, you must have an engineer. And we say, but you know, we can't afford these people, and then find engineer who could look after five or ten or whatever. So maybe some discussion on that. I know it's a burning point, and I've had so many emails and phone calls about that thing lately. So maybe, maybe the DMRE can help us there and say, listen, guys, it's, it's, because we're trying to get it pushed up to, let's say, three thousand.
Hi Nico, we seem to be losing signal. I lost signal a minute ago, but I'm back on. But we missed that conversation.
Okay, let me quickly just recap it. The two thousand five hundred kilowatt engineers, some, some regions pushing it, other regions are saying it's not, not vital. It's a major problem with the economy as it is now to appoint these expensive engineers. And we've asked that one engineer maybe look after three or four or five quarries. Maybe just give us your view or your thinking behind what we should do as an industry. We are pushing it at, at EMRAC. We are, it's there. It's lying on the table. It's not finished.
Hi Nico. Nico, you know, on the two and a half thousand kilowatt, and I know there's talk about the five thousand kilowatt that should have been changed. That's about a year out of process now. But it's the amount of power that you install on the mine to dictate that. And again, you know, if you put somebody in that's very competent, that, that you can show his competency levels, and you ask for one manager, or one engineer to be put over two mines, that has been granted in Kuzalu Metel, more than two, it was felt, depending on the distances from the quarries, is it able for that person to, to actually conduct the inspections and accordingly run the engineering side of the mine? With one ticket over more than one mine. But when, you know, you ask for to run a quarry without the engineer's certificate, you've got to then, I don't know, address the competencies. I, I don't personally see how you can give permission for that. Because of the power outage on the mine and the, the quality of person that is not a qualified engineer. You take a tradesman, and I've got nothing against a tradesman. I'm a tradesman myself. I'm a miner. So, but has he got the competencies to be able to run a HD reticulation, to run a diesel fleet, to run a complete plant with crushers, walkways, that type of item? Pumping systems that start becoming bigger. So that's where we're sitting. The law is, is clear in what it asks for, and we try and follow that letter of the law. And like I say, permission has been given to run more than one mine with more than, with one manager, and to run more than one mine with one engineer. And those permissions have been given in the past.
Is there anybody who wants to make some comments on? The only thing I want to raise, which I did raise at. the only thing I want to raise, which I did raise at EMRAC and Grant, you're a hundred percent right, the 5,000, we're pushing for that. But I think the problem that some of our members had is what is calculated? I always joke and say, do you calculate the lawnmower, also the weed eater into this 2,500? Because that's now being sarcastic, but, uh, and, and it, and, and we've had it from senior D M R people saying that it's the power that comes into the quarry, the Eskom power that comes in, if I, if my terminology is right. And there's some confusion on that. So I think that's where that happiness starts.
Sorry, Nico, Nico, we've lost you. We've lost you for a moment there. Can you please repeat?
Sorry. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Nico?
Yes.
We have lost the conversation for a moment there. Is it just us or are the other members experiencing the same?
I don't know, uh.
I think it's just you guys because we could hear Nico clearly. Why could you hear me?
I could hear Nico clearly as well.
I just.
Okay, then it would, from our side, we'll just try and continue, but if this persists, we'll have to reconsider. Let's just give it some more time. You can proceed, Nico.
Okay, what I tried to say is, I think the problem, Grant's right, that we're trying to push for the 5,000. Um, but the problem is in some cases, the calculation, because the law says that it's the power that comes into the quarry. Now, we've had some, some cases where people have calculated, uh, the ready mix truck that comes on and the truck that comes in. I'm sarcastic when I say the lawnmower and all that. I, I don't think that was the intention. The intention was the power that comes into the operation from the power supplier. It could be Eskom, it could be municipality. And I think that's where we have a bit of a battle. Maybe you could comment on that?
Hi Nico, um, I've actually got a, a paper that was drawn up years ago in the department where it actually explains it. Um, and it's the installed power, in other words, actually electrical reticulation that comes onto the mine, the size of that install, install transformer. And then once you've calculated that install transformer, obviously none of the single motors or anything mean anything. Um, but then it has to add in all your diesels. So in other words, you're going to take each of your front end loaders, your excavators, A D Ts and even your buckies that work there. Um, when it comes to ready mixed trucks, it's a, a different point of discussion because are you operating under the OSH Act? And if so, is the mine splitting too? Do you have fences in place? And this all still comes back from the Bird's Bricks judgment, um, about splitting the mine. But, uh, if something goes wrong and then engineer says, well, he does this on the mining side or on the mine side and on the OSH Act side, he does the other vehicles, that also comes into play. So we must be careful of what vehicles we say is included and what isn't included. And you know, a lawnmower with a five or 10 kilowatt motor is not really going to make that bigger difference.
Thanks, Grant. Uh, yeah, the law is just sarcasm from our side. Anybody else who would like to raise here while we've got our colleagues here? And maybe share your views about it. Otherwise, I'm the only person talking. Jeremy, you're right. Glenn?
And Nico, just from my side, um, the, 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 the point that I'm wanting to raise and obviously this is, we, we've discussed this within AfriSam is that we, we fully aligned with the fact that there is an engineer that is required. And, um, and as Grant said, it, it, it's important that that person is competent and, um, that they are able to carry out the functions that, uh, that they are required on the operations. And for us, it's not so much saying that we cannot afford it, uh, that, that's not, not the issue. I think the biggest concern that, or the biggest challenge that we have is, is the ability to hold on to your top, uh, your top engineers in the industry. The second, the second challenge that we're facing that as, as a, as let's say, from, um, from, from a, uh, let's say, a, a body now, a spizer. One of the challenges that, that we face is that if we're wanting to develop our own engineers, we are really struggling in order to be able to, uh, get them the, the necessary training in order to be able to qualify as a G C C engineer. Because many of the, uh, our, you know, mining companies outside of that are not willing to allow, let's say, a secondments for young engineers to go on to those operations. Because, uh, that's the only place that they can get their mine, uh, their underground experience, their mine wanders. And it's more on that basis that we need, I, I believe in the future, we need a, a qualifications that relevant for engineers on surface mines that, that allow us to do the in-house training, but deals with all the, 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 the concerns that Grant has raised. So in other words, important for your earthmoving equipment. It's, uh, i- important for all your surface auxiliaries and, and such likes. But to try and train someone where you're not able to get the experience, that means you have to compete with the mines in order to purchase those persons into the industry. And that's where there is a huge challenge with all the spizer memberships. So just a comment on my side and something that we from AfriSam are grappling with. Uh, we had a, quite a lengthy discussion with our cement colleagues the other days. How do we get the training for these engineers? Because it's not a sustainable model to try and go and purchase, uh, these skills outside of our industry. We need to be able to develop it. So just a, a challenge and, uh, but I think overall a support that, you know, the, the G C C or a, a competent engineer is required on the, the mines. We, we get that, we understand that. And I think, you know, from us, it, it, it has, it, it, it has proved worthwhile. So just some comments from my side.
Thanks, Glenn. Uh, I just want to support that problem, uh, Grant. I'll give it to you now. I just want to add on. Uh, uh, Theodore, the engineer for AfriSam has asked me, we're trying to get three or four engineers uh, to go and work at a big mining house. I went through the Mine Health and Safety Council. I went through top D M R officials. I've gone through EMRAC. And we've asked the mines, can you take these people? They are, they are nervous to take them with COVID. We've got a problem. And number two is they don't want them to come and work there for training. It's a major problem. So we can't send the people there to go and get trained. And, uh, this is what he's raising with Glenn raising is a major problem. So maybe Grant, sorry, I interrupted you.
Now, thanks for that, um, for that update. I think as, as the regional office with regards to training, I mean, we appreciate that the mines that are available in our region might not accommodate, I think, this, the N E C H A E training, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and obviously with COVID, things have become quite difficult. But in terms of our experience with training, um, people who are upcoming to be engineers, industry is, is more than willing to assist with it. We have had people ourselves that have sent to different provinces just to attain that training with regards to N E C H A E. And I mean, um, I think I'll open the floor just to also approach us. Let us see where we can assist. But I don't see, uh, uh, industry rejecting that request. We can try and, um, collaborate and engage and also share information in terms of who can assist. Because we work together with other P I S, we can make the platform available so that we can assist. And I don't think that's a challenge for us if we can get involved. But obviously with COVID, things are a bit stricter. But definitely industry from my side and from the, the regional office, they have been assisting us for some time.
If you want to ask another question, heads up? Right, I think Glenn, you muted, but if you want to ask something, please, I, I'm looking at your hands. So it's supposed to be just a sticky hand, as they call it.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, uh, didn't take my hand down. So I don't have any other, uh, questions on that.
I, I just want to raise another issue that's been forwarded to me and, and I need the, the D M R E to help me. Uh, it's this whole thing about your mine surveying qualification. Who's the person that does it? And there's some uncertainty. Some people are saying it must be this type of, uh, uh, surveyor, it must be this. Can you maybe just give us a quick rundown, uh, from the D M R side? Who is the person? What is the qualification to do the, the, the mine survey? No way?
I'm looking for the hand, Nico. Okay. Can I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me take down this hand first. All right, with regards to mine survey, we would not be able to assist Nico. Unfortunately, we don't have, um, jurisdiction over that, but the, there's a director for mine survey in head office. His name is, um.
Siluman Malinga.
Not, not Malinga, the one in Victor. There's a Victor in head office who deals with mine surveys, a director of mine survey. And he also oversees the qualifications and, uh, requirements for, for right in mine survey. Also with our exams department in terms of acceptance is Mr. Tele Musa Malinga, who heads the examination department. Those will be able to assist you. Unfortunately, originally, we don't, um, administer that and unfortunately we can't assist with that. I'll get you the, the complete name of the director for survey during the meeting, uh, so that we can make follow-ups there.
You're a star. Thanks. If you forward that to me, then I will write to them and ask them for, for guidelines and we'll share it with the industry. At this stage, can I maybe?
Sorry, Nico, it would be, before I forget, before I forget, it would be Victor Mawasan. He sits in, uh, head office, Victor Mawasan. He sits in head office, uh, at the Technical Services Unit.
Why don't you send it to me by email if it's possible? Sorry to, to ask you to do that.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Right, the, the other question that I know we raised for last year's meeting, which never happened, and maybe this is something. The, the whole issue about, um, uh, blasting, uh, getting permission to blast. Now, let me just give you a bit of a background. Blasting, uh, nationally is becoming a bit of a problem because we are clearly seeing that, uh, communities are using blasting. And I've just written a huge document which is here, I had to check it today about blasting. There was a court case very recently. And the D M R E won the case with our member. So, uh, it, it's very positive against the community. But there are members in the, in the K Z N area that have said, who issues the blasting certificate? Why is it taking so long and so forth and so forth and so forth? So it's been a bit of a, uh, a thing that we're not too sure where it comes from, who issues it, uh, why is it taking so long and why are other people that want to do a borrow pit or do a sand road, get a blasting certificate so quickly or permission? Maybe just, just give us a bit of a run in on that one.
Hi Nico, um, Nico, uh, when it comes to the 500 meter blasting permission, it's not a blasting certificate, uh, as such. Um, you know, the, um, the biggest issue is community involvement. Um, and, um, and what that community involvement is and how the mines interact with the community surrounding them. Uh, and what is the approach the mine takes? Does the mine actually inspect the homes and the houses of these people? Is it businesses? If it comes to a freeway, if it comes to Eskom power lines, railway lines, um, even normal national roads or provincial roads, um, there isn't really a big issue, um, when it comes to that. The, the P P V velocities, uh, are high. Um, you know, Eskom is anything 75 and up. Um, roads department is also 75 to 100 millimeters per second, railway lines similarly. So as long as you get the right person to talk to, they give you the permission. It does change from area and I saw one the other day, which was quite different, a reply from Eskom. So those issues normally take a few weeks to sort out and we don't have an issue giving that permission. All right, because the owner of the property as such, or the, the item, the S O E, he's quite happy with the mine blasting. But when it comes to an area where you've got a lot of houses right next to the mine, then it becomes an issue because there seems to be a disconnect or a, um, a breakdown in communication behind the mines. Big mines, they have community liaison offices. Obviously, they're also expensive animals and not every mine can afford it. Um, uh, but that's where we come. And then you come to an impasse, uh, where guys claim that you've cracked the house. Um, and this has happened. There aren't pictures taken of the houses before the mines blasted. They've been blasting for 20 years or even longer. And then we've got this issue with a house that's cracked. We've got maybe damages. There is cases where there's actual damage is proved. There's cases where damages are accused and obviously we take everything with a pinch of salt and try and come down to some kind of a realistic information on it. And then try and say, what is the mine doing to resolve these problems? And we're not saying the mine must go and fix up everything or repair everything or whatever. But there is some kind of a community involvement and a responsibility from an employer of a mine to protect everybody around that mine. And again, you know, when it comes to K Z N, we've got a particular problem. Um, because a lot of our land is the king's land, you know, in Kinyama Family Board Trust. That land, the houses encroach on those mines quite a lot. We've got a lot of issues from municipality that want to build in that open area next to a mine because they've got services all around it. It's a quick fix. They've got roads, they've got water, power, sewage. And they want to utilize that area to build houses. Sometimes the mines give them permission to use those areas. So they actually say, all right, well, you can mine, you can build houses up to 200 meters from the mine. Then the mine turned it around to us and says, will you give us permission for these, for the blasting? Now we're sitting in, in the middle of nowhere. How do you go and clear a thousand homes to do a blast? How do you make sure there's no people in it, no animals in it? That blast radius, flow rock radius is a major issue to us. Some mines have got permission where they've actually got to put netting over the top, belting, sand, that we try and reduce the risk of flow rock. Containing of the P P V is in there. Proper measurement to the P P Vs is important. We still got mines that only use one, um, seismograph to measure. Other mines are using five or six at the moment, that we get a realistic figure. So it is difficult for us to find out what to do, how to do it and get to an understanding between the community and the mine itself. I don't know if that explains it in a bit.
Thanks, Grant. Anybody else who would like to make a comment on this one? They were, they were, uh, Jeremy?
Uh, thanks, Nico. Grant, thanks for that. Yeah, there's obviously numerous challenges from, from different sites and so on. Uh, Grant, just a quick one, maybe on, uh, I heard rumors of, um, it needs to become an annual, um, update or, or, or process that you have to do. And it, can you maybe just give clarity on that?
All right, with regards to the annual renewal of, uh, requests for permission with the 500 meters, historically, what has happened is the permissions that are open-ended, so it doesn't have expiry date. And as time goes on and when the regulations were updated in September 2015, we had to incorporate those regulations into the permission. So currently we're sitting with a situation where we would assess operation to operation and look at what, what the challenges are. And in terms of monetary, increased monetary with regards to the challenges that they are facing, we've now, uh, made the permissions to be one year. But you will be approached properly individually as an, as a, as an employer. Obviously, it's a risk-based approach. Different operations face different, um, challenges. And that's why you would see other operations have got one year permissions. Others still have open-ended permissions. Not to say that the legislations don't apply to them, but we're looking at the risks that are, uh, permanent in that operation and would approach the employer and say, look, these are the challenges you are sitting with for in terms of assisting to monitor and improving the, the measures that you have to put into place in terms of the 500 meter permission. You, we are giving you three months or we'll stipulate in terms of how many months we're giving you for you to reapply for a, an annual, uh, permission. So we're going forward with the annual renewal of the permission, but it's a risk-based approach. So others have it, others are still not having it. So that's where it is. So it's not per se is a rumor. If you haven't been approached as an employer, it means that in terms of risks, uh, probably, uh, things seem to be managed, uh, to a satisfactory level. Others have got community complaints, they, they are stopped. Obviously, there are issues, then we're trying to mediate in between. But we are heading definitely towards getting the renewal. But we are heading definitely towards getting the renewal of, um, the, the one year. So that's where the matter sits right now.
Jeremy, happy?
Thank you, thank you very much for that.
Good. Okay, so, so just to get clarity, so if we have not been approached, so we still use our current blasting permission and we do not apply until we get approached by the DMRE. Is that the, the ruling?
Yes, absolutely. Because remember when you got, when you got that permission, there were certain requirements you had to fulfill. And the reason why you were given it, it means you had to fulfill those, those, uh, requirements. Now with the new legislations that were, were done in September 2015, if you, if you have not been approached yet, your blasting permission still stands. You, if you, we want you to move over to a one-year permission, you will be directly approached and obviously we'll give you a reasonable notice period for you to be able to satisfy all the requirements. And it's also a risk-based approach, so it will differ from operation to operation. But if you've not been approached, your blasting permission still stands.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Felix?
Hi Nico, thank you. Um, just a quick question to the PI on the response. Can then the reverse also apply in a situation where historically there could have been issues? And there is a plan and process in place now to manage the challenges, uh, between the employer or the, uh, operation and the community and you have now a system and process in place to manage whatever challenges could have been. Would then the DMR in that case also review the process that instead of one year, because you now have an effective system or process in place, that the DMR could look at probably a longer, um, period than, than a one year? Would that day the reverse also apply?
No, the reverse does not apply. Obviously we'll have to get an invitation from yourself updating us of the measures that you have. Remember, we are now updating systems in terms of the, the, uh, updated legislations of 2015. So reverse does not apply, uh, we'll have to review your systems, see if they, uh, they satisfy our current challenges in KZN. I think you can appreciate that the challenges that we have here in KZN are different from MP, Limbo as well. So, no, 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 um, that will have to have an engagement directly with the employer. And most of the cases would be no, um, otherwise we wouldn't even approach you in terms of renewal.
Thanks. I see we've got five minutes left, we only put a, a, an hour down for today's meeting, didn't know to, um. Can I, can I ask, uh, Glenn, just before I allow you, can I ask in case we cut out? Um, can I set up a follow-up meeting of this nature and we'll get items for discussion in April? Uh, if that's agreeable, if somebody's got a problem that just shout, no, we don't want it. And if I can, then also ask that we don't have it on a Monday because people are complaining. Glenn? Sorry Glenn, you muted. Glenn, you're still on mute?
Sorry, I'm talking to myself. Um, ju- just a question I have with the, the yearly, uh, submissions. So I appreciate that, uh, that the approach that's been taken and, and why the pressure's on. Overall, just my, my personal view is I, I think this is a huge risk to the mining industry as a whole. Because, uh, it is one, one area that, um, that from communities, it's the quickest way that they can close down any operation. And, and that's going to affect the, the whole mining industry. And unfortunately, we in the quarrying industry operate in, in, uh, urbanized areas. As soon as we have to go into non-urbanized areas or rural areas, the cost of our materials become too expensive to, to transport. So it's a huge challenge that our industry i- is exposed to and this I raised, uh, raised with the, when we went to see, um, uh, the inspectorate in Pretoria and, 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 and discussed the, the challenges associated with it. But just a, a question, so if the permissions are in and you've, uh, submitted them timely and then for various reasons, the permissions have not been given, how do you, how do we get around the fact where, where the time has now elapsed and blasting needs to take place? Um, so are we able to then apply for temp, uh, a blast by blast temporary, uh, application up until such time that, uh, all the requirements have been satisfied from, from the DMR in terms of the overall permission? Because failing that, the mine would have to stop and effectively will grind to a halt because it will run out of, uh, material if the, the blasting permissions take, uh, time. For whatever reason, uh, the technicality to why they take is not important, but how do we get around that? Because that is a serious challenge that we've faced, uh, in, in various regions, uh, with regards to, to the blasting permissions.
Should I, should I answer that Nico?
Please, oh, sorry, uh.
Okay, let me lower my hand. All, all right, I've noted that and I'll respond to it now. I think earlier Nico, you've raised a request for a follow-up because of the meeting ending. But, um, I think we, we are happy to assist in April, we still will discuss and agree on dates. But with us, we are in the office, we're doing administrative work on, on, on Mondays, so Mondays are our best days. And Tuesday onwards, we are in the field, so maybe, um, you need to consider that, please, for availability. The second point around, uh, the, the question around blasting permissions, where you have applied in time and you don't get responses and now you're out of, uh, 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 material, you need to blast, you're in a corner. Um, that's diffi- is a difficult one to answer it, uh, across as, as a general statement. What I'd say is it, you know, it differs from operation to operation in terms of what the challenges are. And maybe from our side as well, the challenges, once you've submitted documentation, sometimes there isn't enough information, sometimes the consent is not up to the standard that we want. Information, monitoring, you know, it, it's, every single time is a different challenge from operation to operation. So we'd engage with the employer directly in terms of, can you please look at this, resubmit it? Can you please look at this, resubmit it? And now with COVID and, and the, the frequency of availability of our staff to process that, it complicates in terms of turnaround time. And mind you, as an office, we've got a turnaround time to process these permissions and applications, so it's not really in our favor to prolong it. But in short, what I can say is that we don't give out temporary permissions. We, it, it has never worked, um, because of those challenges that are individual to the operation. What we can easily do is say that when there's a submission and there's something missing, what we do is afford the employer to give us extra information. And in between the, the time schedules, that would, would complicate in terms of turnaround times. But, um, we should, by right, we should be sending a letter immediately and say, dear Mr. Glenn Johnson, you, uh, your application has been received, however, there is not enough, uh, information in terms of picture inventory or signatures or consent, we therefore close the matter, please reapply. But we wouldn't want, we didn't want to go through that process because we promote continuous engagements. However, then what it does, it, it prolongs our turnaround time in terms of responding to the application. Unfortunately, we don't give out temporary permissions. Because if you get a temporary permissions, we are allowing, um, the employer to continue blasting whereas it has not satisfied the requirements in terms of what we'd require from the office. So maybe what I think we should do in this forum and going forward, we should discuss it into detail, just request, and we, we can give out what is it that we look out for when you look out into a permission. Obviously it changes from time to time with the challenges that we face regionally. Different provinces would give different timelines in terms of the permission. With us, it's one year and we give you three months, uh, in terms of preparation if you're coming to end your open-ended permission. But in short, no, we don't give, uh, temporary permissions. Two, challenges are different from operation to operation, we encourage a continuous involvement. But I have to say, that has bitten us, uh, quite a lot in terms of us giving the employer time to engage. What we are looking to is if there isn't anything, we would respond with a letter, the same way you've, uh, applied to us and say, dear Nicko Pinar, we have received your application, however, it doesn't have one, two, three, please submit. The file is closed, when it, when you reapply, it's a different file altogether. I hope that, uh, answers your question, otherwise you can make a follow-up.
Uh, any comments from somebody else? Maybe I should just, uh, propose, it's not my meeting, it's all of yours meeting, that we do it in April, we do it on a Monday, I will check with our DMRE colleagues. Uh, and then next time we make it an hour and a half and maybe we go into some of the detail of, uh, some of these issues. Cause I also still want at the next meeting to raise this whole thing about illegal mining. And what do we as the industry do? Because I understand that you guys need to tell, I mean, yeah, it's difficult for us. Uh, what I also do, uh, am doing is I'm setting up a meeting with the Millos Council who's got an illegal mining, uh, committee, where we'll bring in the top cops, we'll bring in SARS, we'll bring in everybody and have a session with them for our industry and I'll also invite, um, our DMRE co- uh, colleagues in the regions to participate in this meeting, uh, with the, the top, uh, regulators, police and everybody else, if that's fine with you. Unless there's something crucial.
No, that's, um, okay.
Carry on now, go, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, obviously the, the, the items for discussion or to assist in terms of participation. But I think, uh, just in brief, illegal mining sits with our Pretoria head office. Um, I think there's a compliance officer there dealing with that, however, we are able to collect information regionally. And maybe if they're from part of the next session, if it's on the agenda, then they can help us a great deal. Nico, I think that, um, the next meeting, please schedule it for two hours because there's, um, there's continuous engagement. So that, that should assist in terms of, um, time. So two hours will, will, will be sufficient.
I, I will do that and I will first get a date from you guys, we'll set it for two hours. Maybe nine o'clock is too early, if you want me to do it at 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock, I will do it, we'll, 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 we'll do it. So everybody come participate. We had a, a very good participation group today. Um, and I must thank you all for participating. Um, we will send out the link of the YouTube connection to this. Uh, Aspazza is YouTubeed and you type in Aspazza and you get all our meetings, all our workshops, everything is on YouTube these days. So, yeah, thanks a lot, unless there's something crucially that you want to raise. But send me a mail and we'll do a proper agenda next time and we'll ask for more information from you people. Thanks for joining and I trust that this week is, uh, COVID-free. Thank you very much.
Thank you Nico, thank you for, for the meeting, we really appreciate it. And I do think that, uh, we appreciate the fact that you were able to engage originally. I mean, uh, challenges change from time to time. So in terms of updates, it will be great when we are in touch. Um, let's continue with that. I think, uh, I must also commend the participation in this session. Um, I think it was very positive, progressive. Um, so we're looking forward to, you know, to the next meeting and resolving some of these issues. Thanks very much for your time.
Thanks, thanks a lot for that.